A six-woman-strong planning commission this evening. It's awesome. So, um, thank you for volunteering to be on the commission. And I was very impressed by your credentials and look forward to working with you.
Thank you for the time.
Okay, so, um, looking at the agenda, um, do, does anybody have any changes or a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion swift, second for Gosa, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, um, just remind everybody about the meeting protocol and make sure that we all act with the appropriate level of decorum, tolerance, civility, et cetera. Um, and I'm gonna open up the meeting to any public comments on non-agenda items. If you would turn on the microphone and if you care to introduce yourself and give your address, that'd be great.
Is it on? Yes, it's on, okay. Hi, this has never happened before to me, probably never to you either. Anyway, um, thanks for hearing me tonight. Um, my name is Roberta Anthies. I live at Two Snowden Fairfax. And, um, I can read this really quickly in three minutes, but if you don't mind, could I relax a little bit and not take three and a half or four or something? Okay, okay. I came because I'm concerned really about what I see as sort of an avalanche of deregulation with the Senate bills. And I'm a, I'm pro-affordable housing. I supported Victory Village very strongly, but I am concerned about these particular bills and the number of them and the extent to which they would really deregulate small-town government. Anyway, um, I'm skeptical also about the rationale for proposing them. Scott Wiener and his co-author Hanlon claim that the bills are about helping poor people afford housing, but a lot of the evidence, to me, doesn't lead in that direction. SB 35, which has already been passed, actually reduced affordability when it required only 10% affordable units instead of 20% for increased development rights. So that seems to me that affordability, at least in that case, was not a priority. SB 827 requires no affordable units. In fact, it mandates above moderate rate housing. If they'd mandated 100% affordable housing, the bills would have a lot more credibility, to me, but they don't. They claim that adding 3 million-plus above moderate income units to cities and small towns will reduce rents. And they use Seattle as an example, but I found it to be a weak example when I dug into it a little bit more. Seattle added these units at 40% higher rates than were currently used. And, um, the rates dropped only because they were, they were exorbitant. People wouldn't rent them. So they were able to say it reduced rents. But it went down to a level that was still unaffordable by most people. So, I'd like to see more evidence that this particular type of, um, urbanization, if you will, actually works and really reduces rents. Seattle and New York are the two examples. Seattle didn't hold water for me. I don't know enough about New York to talk about it. They've also ignored the fact that the EIR for Plan Bay Area concluded that urbanizing suburbs would lead to increased greenhouse gases. And they don't acknowledge or discuss the unintended consequences of the bills. 3 million more people competing for poor people's jobs really might not help poor people. Overusing resources like water, classrooms, police, firefighters, hospitals, et cetera, will reduce the quality of life for everybody, in particular, poor people. And small towns won't really be able to fund the increased demands easily. Moreover, the metrics that they use to justify these ideas include, see if I can find my map, a map of people who can't afford their housing. And this comes from Scott Wiener's own letter. Um, "At least 30% of people in every metropolitan statistical area cannot afford local rents. That share is 60% in some areas." And he, he shows you the map, and you can see the darker areas, which are 60%, the lighter areas, which are 30%. And he basically shows you where the people live, which is kind of my point. They, they live there already. They have housing units. It's affordability that is their problem. He goes on to state, he says here, "California households in the bottom quarter of the income distributions, the poorest 25% of households, report spending four times more of their income, 67% on average, than households in the top quarter of the income distribution, which spend 16% on average." That's an incredible statistic. But both of these arguments, oh, I'm gonna give you this map. Both of those arguments and others that I've read are much better arguments for subsidies than they are for increasing numbers of units, in my opinion, and I'm no, you know, planner. I feel you have a much better chance of helping poor people if we beefed up Section 8, which is sort of in freefall since it's been founded. Or if we started a new program called something like rent stamps, which would operate kind of like food stamps, where a person got the stamp and could use it as legal tender in any unit, not just a unit specially for poor people. You know, they could use it to pay their rent. Food stamps, you know, you don't have special stores for poor people. You know, you take your food stamps, and if you're poor, you could go to the good earth and pay for it, which I think is a much more egalitarian and democratic way of helping poor people. Anyway, I say let the huge corporations that have moved in, taken over, raised rents, and pushed out the natives help fund these subsidies. They've come in sort of like an invasive species, you know? They're the Scotch broom of the housing crisis, not small governments, not, not our zoning laws, not the democratic processes that have held us in good stead for hundreds of years. Most people I know would rather have their taxes raised to help poor people be able to afford rent than to have the quality of their lives destroyed, really, by overcrowding and their voices silenced by deregulation. So, I'm just hoping that we look at this really closely before we buy into the rationale for these programs. There are so many bills now that are just basically taking away the voice of the people, and that really concerns me. I think, you know, I think no matter what happens with housing, every voice has to be heard. And some of these bills really shut down the voices of people on things like density, height, parking setbacks, the things that mattered the most to people. And all those voices need to be heard if the projects are really gonna be optimal. Whether we, whether you like their voices or not, they have to be heard. And, and I think these, too many of these Senate bills are just absolutely wiping that out. Planning commissions will be irrelevant in a way, you know? And we need planning commissions, we need town councils. And so, I just hope you will oppose some of these Senate bills, in particular 827, 828, 35, of course, and 167 are already passed. But the avalanche is coming. It's, it's not just a slippery slope anymore, it's an avalanche. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you very much for those eloquent words. I, I think you may be preaching to the choir on this dais in terms of some of this legislation. And I also think the council is, is aware of it and thinking about it as well, so. We're just finishing the public hearing on non-agenda items. I don't know if you wanna talk about anything that's not on the agenda tonight?
I'm not really sure. Is the wall property on there?
No, it's not.
Can I say something?
Yes, you can. If you can just introduce yourself and if you wanna give your address, that'd be great.
Jessica Green, Ridgeway Avenue, Fairfax. Well, he says he's very green, but he's got five, 10 swimming pools planned up there with thousands of gallons of water, when we might actually be in another drought at this point. And I think, you know, we have to think about all these, all of the things involved with this, with this project. I think, I don't know, the town does not have to allow him to extend Ridgeway. That's up to the town. That isn't, you know, a given. Uh, I think that the clustering has to do with him not having to pay for a lot of roads to be built to put those, uh, those houses and not, you know, and spread them out more. And also, the fact that a lot of that land has mudslides and has liability. Um, you know, there's a lot of concerns about that, that project. And, uh, I think we'd still have to think about traffic and everything else. I mean, yeah, it's not affordable. But also, you know, our little Ridgeway road up there, we all paid to have it paved. It's not a town-maintained road. And with all these big trucks and big road expansions and everything driving over our road, it's gonna tear it up. Um, I mean, it already has some cracks, and yet it's been done within, I'd say, the last 20 years, the, the repaving. It's just a delicate little, you know, little road. In fact, Vanny Lane is also that way. It's a very narrow, um, nobody maintains these roads. I'm actually the only one that cleans the road myself. So, I, I just think that, you know, we have to think about all these things, because it's really up to the town whether they're gonna grant this guy something. And he's saying, well, he's spending so much money, and he has to be covered. But that's not really the responsibility of the town. The town is, you know, you guys are here to protect Fairfax, basically, and see that it, you know, stays, you know, the, the character that it is, and that we have enough resources for everybody. And it doesn't seem like building these kind of huge homes with big pools and everything is contributing to that idea. So, that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jessica, can you turn that mic off for me?
The button?
Thank you. Okay, I am closing the public comments on the non-agenda items. And, um, the consent calendar has no items. And the public hearing has no items. And we have one item on the discussion items that we will get to now.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This is getting close to the end of discussions and a lot of effort by all concerned, particularly your commission, regarding trying to boil down the usual overload of worthy projects and areas for work into something that is a little bit more feasible and that represents priorities so that we have some expectation that we'll be able to get to at least some of these in, in the ranked order that your commission recommends and ultimately the town council directs. What you have in front of you was what staff pulled out of the workshop, last month's workshop, and it represents the highest vote-getting areas in the general plan. I, I should back up a little bit. It's not just about general plan implementation, of course. We do have two other big projects in front of us that, not to bleed into my director's report, but it's really gonna cover the same topic. I will be going to the town council at their March 7th meeting to solicit feedback on broad policy areas. Boy, this is just winging. I never know which way to point this.
Move your cellphone away.
Okay. All right, or maybe this direction. Yeah, that's not, this one acts like it's about ready to feed back. In any event, so the town council forced some policy direction, just some sidebars on where the planning commission should be directing its efforts, planning commission and staff in regards to cannabis regulations. As your commission is aware, we're under a moratorium until the end of October. And it's staff's hope that we will have a program with more permanent regulations in place by then. We know that there's a lot of discussion that, and work that's gonna need to take place between now and then. And hopefully, with some good direction from the council, we'll be able to start digging into that at the following planning commission meeting. In addition, and even though this is not an agenda item, just as a brief overview, as your commission is undoubtedly aware, I sent out that email to you and all in Sundry. The Miranda Heights project has been formally submitted. We've posted all of the project information that was submitted on a newly-created website specifically for that project, although, who knows in the future, we may start to utilize that format for other types of projects if we get the staffing resources to do so. But in any event, this is part of this maximizing the opportunities for public input, public knowledge, discussion. I'm pleased to see that people are, are paying attention. Obviously, this is a big deal for Fairfax. And it's, it's a big subdivision, anyway you cut it, in this county. The applicant came in today with the landscape plans, which, he's using a local landscape architect, Michael Pahn, who's, seems to be very competent. And so, this kind of resets the clock in terms of getting comments back from it to the applicant. Staff is in the process of preparing to do a project status letter on that project, and we will be posting that information on the website and circulating copies to your commission and other interested parties when that does take place, which I anticipate at this point will be sometime in mid-March. That schedule probably works pretty well. I've already received comments from a couple of agencies that they need some time to prepare their comments. For example, Marin Municipal Water District with regard to what kind of approvals the applicant will need and maybe some facilities and things like that. Obviously, the, the steepness of the site and the distance, that water's moving up and down a hill is obviously gonna be, it represents some logistical challenges. But nonetheless, the project is, is, is live at this point. Information is coming in and out, and we will be reporting back to your commission. The Fairfax Open Space Committee very preliminarily may be hearing this on March 8th. That will be posted on the town's webpage and on the specific website for this project as soon as we have confirmation regarding quorums, et cetera. So, I'll be making a presentation at that time, and we'll continue to tend this and move it forward. So, in that context, with those two major gotta-take-care-of-it-work program priorities, along with the, the general application processing, which we just happened to be in a very fortunate circumstance at this meeting, certainly since I've been working for the town, we haven't had a clear agenda, which is kind of nice, because now we can focus on what much of the workshop, the planning commission's workshop on, which is looking at what the general plan, which is often referred to as the constitution for development, and it's really much more than just development. It's, it's talking about the character and the future of the town. One of the things that staff notes is that the highest single area, topical area that the commission wanted to work on was historic preservation. It's also a statement about Fairfax's history. There's a saying that you don't know where you are until you figure out where you've been. The context is so critical. But what you have here are the topical areas that your commission and staff developed. And it's noted that these don't follow directly from the general plan's topical areas. And one of the reasons for that, of course, is many of the issues or the topics that were addressed in the general plan jumped in multiple categories, general plan element categories. And in addition, it just seemed like there were certain subjects that kind of superseded the, the state-mandated general plan elements. And, you know, first among that is the natural disaster and safety preparedness, education and recovery. Also include historic preservation, environment, transportation, housing, and town ordinances. It's staff's hope tonight that your commission will be able to take this consensus list of the highest priorities from the workshop and further prioritize them, recognizing that there's every likelihood that only a fraction of these will be able to be worked on in any substantive matter in the next year. That's not to say that we can't pick a topic that may take longer than a year to work on. If that's something that your commission recommends and the council agrees upon, we will certainly be splitting it up into work program items and come back and discuss how, how to show forward progress and, and get some things done this calendar year. But when you look at these areas, these were all items which your commission had a consensus. Yes, these were the most important things out of the 319 items that were assigned to either planning staff, the planning commissioner, both. And so, what I would like to do tonight is to focus on these, these items, these implementing programs, and figure out which one is, well, one suggestion is if each commissioner has their top five, then we can sort of assemble those top five from everyone and figure out which one among these has, just sort of rank them. And when we get from, once we get past the top 10, I would say, at that point, we've got something to present to the town council and get their feedback on. So, if anybody has any questions or comments?
We talk about the next year, but specifically, what are we talking about time-wise that you're looking to work on? Are we talking about, you know, a calendar year from now? Are we talking about this year and the end of the upcoming fiscal year? I mean, what kind of a timeframe are you looking at?
Well, it's, it's both this next calendar year, in other words, the remainder of this fiscal year, and the following, the next fiscal year, which would go through next July. Probably the next fiscal year discussion has to do with if there are items that require budgeting or substantial staff resources and prioritization of how those resources occur. And I'll get into the discussion about the zoning, possible zoning amendments. But the idea is, with pretty much the current budget, what we could work on for the remainder of this fiscal year and then going into the next fiscal year.
So, our fiscal years are July through?
June.
June, so we're really talking about going?
Yes, and if this, if your commission feels that this process is of value, what, one hope is that we would revisit this process in the middle of winter in 2018, 2019, so that we once again can look at, number one, it would be kind of a way to check in on how we're, what progress we're making with what are decided, our work program priorities that we decide now, and then also fold it into the following fiscal year in those discussions.
I mean, I would think that our general plan is to 2030. This is something I think we should be doing all the time, looking at those. Elements of the general plan and working on, you know, accomplishing them, not just a one-time item. I think the things that we probably will come up with, you know, as far as the list, we're not all gonna, I mean, we're not gonna accomplish all of that, and those might be kind of a priority that will continue over fiscal year to fiscal year.
Does anyone else have any questions? I have a couple. I, I wanna know if staff has particular recommendations. I also, in terms of priorities, as we're going through this, I also wanna understand if you guys have thought about, uh, what is the most critical? What is doable in the short term versus long term? Have you guys kind of thought through those questions? And can you make recommendations to us about that?
Okay. Yes, we can, and that gives me a great intro to sort of the preface to all this work, which is what we explained at the workshop and discussed in, in greater detail on which attachment was that, Linda? Attachment three. And that is basically recognizing that, for good and sufficient reasons, Fairfax historically has routed virtually all of its discretionary applications to the planning commission, in many cases to the town council. And, um, the staff's not making any judgment on whether or not those should or shouldn't be, but is pointing out that when we do that, it takes a lot of staff resources, additional staff resources beyond what you would normally encounter if you were, for example, developing standards for fences and saying, okay, if this fence is, meets these standards, then it, it just gets approved. Or situations where some of the more minor projects can be reviewed at an administrative level, where you would still provide public notices, but you wouldn't have to schedule it before the planning commission. It can be noted that when you do that, you tend to facilitate people doing those type of projects, that instead of creating this kind of stilted process where, oh gosh, we're not gonna be able to get you on the planning commission meeting, fast forward another 30 days. It tends to stretch out applicants' timelines, and particularly for some of the smaller projects we've seen, very modest additions, decks, stairways, things like that. You wonder if it's really necessary. I mean, certainly, staff feels comfortable taking on the challenge of the responsibility for making a decision on that. I know that there's been discussion about the decision-maker and, and boards and commission's roles, council's roles. Certainly, if there's projects that appear to be controversial, we could build into any changes we do in our ordinance, the ability to refer it to the commission just to make sure that there's a hearing at a public, a discussion at a public level. So, prefacing anything else we might do, staff feels that it is incumbent on our ability to get some leeway with increased streamlining of these applications. And recognizing that the council's gonna have probably a lot to say about that, I don't know if we need to get into a lot of discussions. What we did with our recommendations in Attachment three was kind of prioritize those items. And now I'm floundering around looking for Item three. Oh, that's what it looks like. Okay, thank you. And so, what we were, what we were looking at in these prioritizations are the ones that we think would have the biggest bang for buck for staff. And so, this is like a, a step before we would get to working on the general plan, and we would probably be doing it simultaneously in terms of coming in with ordinance amendments and recommendations for revisions before your planning commission. And if your commission were amenable to that, we would simultaneously start to look at some of the other priorities that we reach. In terms of general plan-related priorities, one of the nice things about some of these items is they sort of follow naturally. For example, when we're looking at the environment and visually distinctive areas, well, we just happen to have an application that is on visually distinctive areas. And so, what we're in the process of doing right now is digitizing those maps, and we will be coming back and saying, this is not so much for a general plan amendment, but probably clarifying what those are. In discussing with the, the county's GIS people who are working on this, in discussing with them, they looked at that McCarriean 1970s map and say, there's some areas, what do they call it, rubber, rubber rulering or something like that, where you have to sort of take a very precise spatial relationship from the GIS and then convert the paper map to it. And so, we'll have a discussion about that. But that's one that's just gonna, it has to occur. But that's one that's just gonna, it has to occur, and it's getting driven by a project that we're working on. Historic preservation is interesting because we have somebody who is more than willing and able to take the lead on that. And I think we briefly discussed at the workshop, working with Cassidy DeBaker, and maybe having a representative, putting together some kind of group, if that's something that your commission feels might reach the top of the priority list, or one is one of the priorities, we would intend to have that conversation with Cassidy and then kind of work on recommendations to go to the council. But that's something where I think we could kind of let somebody who's enthusiastic about that start to take the lead. Another reason why that is an intriguing option as a priority is that, as noted by speakers in the audience, speaker in the audience already, local autonomy and character seems to be increasingly under attack. And developing some ability to say, this is what Fairfax's character is, regardless of what the disposition of state regulations may be, where there's a will, there's a way. We can figure out a way to work with it and do our best to preserve local character, but we're going to have to figure out what that local character is. So that's another example of, if we're looking at, for example, the downtown area and places that are commercial and might be subject to multifamily development, for example, it would be good to have standards in place that say, yeah, okay, we may not be able to review something as a discretionary application, but here's our standards for what it's got to look like. And so far, it appears that those would be applicable to those type of projects. So that's another example of a priority. The natural disaster safety preparedness and education. I guess you could just say that, you know, when you, when you get a cold shock of reality like we, everybody in California really did, but particularly people in the Bay Area, it would seem that that is an important area to start to bring community awareness and what steps we can do. It's noted that it's challenging because a goodly number of the general plan programs that were assigned to planning staff and to the planning commission really don't belong with us. You can pretty much say that if there's an evacuation plan, it's not going to be planning's responsibility to develop that. And of course, people who've been to the workshop, you know, they, they say, how do you go to the grocery store? That's your evacuation plan. But we know it's more complex than that, but that's an example of something where, even though it's assigned to planning, we would probably not be developing it. Certainly, staff is more than happy to hear the commission's interest in various aspects of that. And if they have something that they feel strongly, and you can note that some of these are, you know, fire hazard abatement districts, things like that, it could be a recommendation from your commission to the council to say, look, this is something that somebody needs to work on to try to address those issues. So those, those type of things. What I discussed at the workshop is the idea of a post-disaster ordinance. And just to summarize what that conceptually consists of, it's almost like a miniature version of a general plan. And what it's an opportunity to do is to address the type of decisions that a community will need, need to make in a very expedited fashion following a disaster and potentially have an opportunity to consider items that might provide additional public safety, community resiliency, things of this nature. Some of the literature I've read in the planning field says, in previous times, it didn't really seem like it was likely that as planners and planning commissions, you would have to address that. And they say it's becoming increasingly apparent that there's a good chance that communities will have to face that. And, you know, again, knocking on wood, hopefully Fairfax won't have to deal with what other communities have had to, but we all know people who've been directly affected by it. So certainly, I would say staff would consider some efforts at developing a post-disaster ordinance, and work in that regard would be a useful endeavor, at least to initially pursue this year. Beyond that, Linda, I'm not sure if you have, I mean, we're really here to just say, you know, what is it that you, looking at this list, feel is, is your top priorities? And one thought would be, if you wanted to take a few minutes, it sounds like some people have already done so, is just rank them ordinally, one through five or something, and we could just sort of tally which votes are which and kind of do a reverse numbering thing where the ones that have the highest numbers would be the highest priorities. And so we're just here to hear what the commission thinks.
Through the chair?
Okay. You do it. Thanks. Okay, I appreciated your workshop result report, and I need to say that I really do agree with it almost completely. If I can review section by section, I think the natural disaster safety preparedness and also the post-disaster recovery, while a really timely and critical item, I would agree, that is not the planning commission's, our role is not to lead in those efforts. And so that would belong most likely to fire or, or to the town council under the auspices of the EOC plan, the Emergency Operations Center Plan, that I'm just now assuming the town has. Okay. And so that would be the more logical place for those activities to occur. Historic preservation, I think we do have an excellent opportunity with Cassidy DeBaker's proposal to do really step one of all the work that has been identified, which includes a historic resource and rehabilitation and enhancement of historic properties. I think the only thing realistically that could occur, and we've yet to see how long it will take her to undertake a historic survey, which was what she offered, simply a historic survey of what we have, an inventory, exactly, of what we have. The beauty of that work, as you so astutely said, Ben, is that we can use the historic character photographs and designs in developing our standards for what we want to see in development moving forward. And I really like the opportunity, and in several places I will mention, the need for us to move towards a, either a more form-based or specific design characteristics that we would propose to be our standard look and feel of how we'd like developments to be. And that historic inventory will help us tremendously, particularly in our historic downtown. In terms of the environment, I like, I like the way you've broken out a couple of key, key steps. For instance, updating the visual resources maps is important, particularly in light of the project that's coming before us. And so that would be wonderful to get moving on immediately. The ridgeline development standards, I believe our general plan has, and our zoning ordinance has a lot of ridgeline, ridgeline development standards that have served us well and will continue to do so, at least in the short term. In terms of transportation, oh, the creek, I'm big on creeks, because you've all seen me stand here in front of council telling them I was up to my knees in waters January and February of last year. So I'm very interested in creeks, but I understand that the logistics and the permitting process of doing anything is extremely complicated, not to mention expensive. And so I think in terms of creek work, it would behoove us to throw in with the county's flood district plans and work, because they're the ones who have the horses and the funding to put together assessments and improvement enhancement plans that could help Fairfax in terms of overall flooding, which is our biggest priority, and then narrowing it down to specific private flooding issues like the ones that I have. But we are doing that already. We're working with them. And so I like the way you've couched the environmental programs, and we can start to take that step one in that direction. In terms of transportation, I'm not sure there's anything that, that can be done. In terms of, there's one item on the list about improving the traffic on Sir Francis Drake. There's nothing we can do, except perhaps if you have any leverage, if you have any leverage with the people at the county who regulate the timing of the lights, that's something we talked about. Some of you will remember, a couple of years back, Shelley Hamilton was very interested in, there was one huge improvement that was done, making that right turn at, at Panchovillas, which used to not be allowed, which was crazy, but the traffic actually flows a lot better since we allow. So there's very little that can be done there. In terms of parking studies, I don't know, I think we've gotten into a lot of trouble just by talking about or suggesting parking studies in this town, you know? And then that tends to get blown out of proportion, so I'm not sure what the immediate need would be for that. And also, it's something that is done with development application, so I don't know that we need to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars to do a parking study when we can require a developer to bring that in. In terms of housing, yes, again, I completely agree. I completely agree with Rebecca, Roberta, excuse me, Roberta's assessment of the horrendous need of affordable housing. But again, unless we are able to sponsor and fund, the affordability of units were very limited insofar as what we can accomplish in that regard. The one thing we could do is, as you point out, a no-net loss housing ordinance. So at least, as we're looking at new development, we're not destroying existing more affordable units for newer unaffordable units. One thing I didn't see here under housing that I believe should be a main priority is to have that study session for the planning commission and town council about the new California codes and how that affects our current standards and building codes and to see, so that we have a better understanding of what leeway we have in terms of entitlement review and where we can exert our standards that would hold up in court. I think that is where we should focus a lot of our initial energy and should be one of our priorities, particularly with the review of the wall property and all the parcel map issues that are coming up in that regard. I'd really love to have a review of the new California laws and the issues with respect to that property before that application comes before us. And so in terms of major priorities, I really see Marinda Heights and the cannabis regulation as the two most important things that we need to do in the current calendar year, because we have an application and because we have a legal mandate to do so, on the other hand. So I really, I really appreciated and very much agree with your suggestions. In terms of attachment two, which is the synopsis of the 350-some potential projects that we looked at, after realizing that we scaled it down to still something that would take us five years to undertake, let alone complete, I went through it, and then with the advice of staff, I've gone through this list and basically slashed and burned a lot of items that, while important, there's no way we'll have time to do them. And I, to me, our priorities are very clear. I don't know how we want to review this attachment two. I'm sure everybody has some ideas on how to do that, but I have selected my top five and can talk about those, but I'm sure other people have comments to say, and so I will let that go and let other people speak.
Anyone else?
Okay. Attachment two has 23 items on it, but when you take a look at it, like you said, Ben, some of these items aren't in our area. Some of the items are nice-to-haves or suggestions, or just kind of statements, ensure reasonable accommodations, preserve existing lower-income units, things about providing, you know, general information on topics to people. So I don't see these kind of as, as general plan requirements per se that, you know, we need to be working on. When you break out items by categories, as you did, for me, the items that I kind of dwindled all that down to disaster preparedness, recovery, so I think we need a post-disaster ordinance and a definition, you know, and within that would bring in the definition and measurement of wide-scale neighborhood destruction and the ordinance, and those are, you know, some of our land use policies. Historic preservation. I think we need to look at the historic preservation ordinance, doing, you know, the first step of an inventory. I was reading recently that an individual in Larkspur had passed away who was instrumental in creating, there's an actual Larkspur historic downtown district that's on the national register. Okay? So, I mean, the other piece of this for me is, is doing the inventory. And while our general plan talks about, you know, a broad kind of inventory of, you know, like Indian areas and other areas, I think concentrating on, you know, on the downtown area and then any other significant pieces in town that are outside of that that may have historical significance. So the inventory, I think, is the first step. I would certainly want to know, you know, local, and we've talked about this before, local, national, state preservation, historical designations, and what we gain from them, what the downsides are, so we can take that and move on to, you know, standards or ordinance or wherever that's going to lead us. So I think, you know, historical preservation, the land use goal of preserving and restoring our local historic buildings, features, and sites is critical, and that, you know, can help us with the downtown area and potential housing changes or other things that would come along, as you mentioned. Housing, and I think the general plan- And I think the general plan speaks to a density bonus program. But I think we need a density bonus ordinance. When we had the briefing from our, we don't have a density bonus ordinance that talks about, you know, what our priorities are, what the requirements are, some of those things that, when we had that joint meeting with the town council and we went over density bonus with Katie, that she talked about the potential benefits of a density bonus ordinance. So I think that's important as we move forward to create something like that that identifies what's important to the town in that area. And then that could help any potential applications coming in, understanding what is important to the town in those areas under the environment category. I mean, I think every map we have needs to be updated and clear. You had mentioned within that the ridgeline development ordinance. And I think you might be speaking specifically to the mapping piece of that. I'm not sure, I know in, I think in, like, the staff report, you said that wouldn't take too much time to review that ridgeline ordinance, the seventeen oh six oh. So I'm not sure if you were going beyond just mapping. I was a little confused on that.
The idea would be to take what we already have in our existing codes and general plan and look at the county's ordinance, because that's what the general, this program talks about. And just see if there's places where we can or should tune it up. For example, one of the things we don't do that the county does, say, if you're in that area, your maximum building height is, I think, eighteen feet, which, interestingly, some people build a two-story building within. But that's an example of something where, if we were to pursue that, we would say, okay, what does that ordinance have? Another example is, I think, the county goes three, well, it's, one of their attributes about what's in is twice as restrictive as Fairfax. So those are the things we'd look at if we were going to investigate that particular set of regs.
Okay, so you're really talking about an overall review of that code and not just the mapping piece?
Correct.
Okay. And then for transportation, I know the town's looking down the road at some point at kind of an overall parking study in town. I think we do need to have a count of parking spaces and a no-net-loss approach to that. I think in the general plan, the last time that was done was two thousand and three. But that may be incorporated in anything the town council looks to do in the area of parking in general. I'm not sure, hopefully that would be a piece of that. But I do think, you know, and this may not get up to the, you know, the top five, but these, in these broad areas are like my concerns. The traffic impact permit ordinance and the code. I think that could stand a review. It never seems in town, as we look to, you know, the different applications that come in, it doesn't seem that any application ever triggers that for the most part. So what we have is each application that comes in then adds to the traffic when you add them all up. But nothing really on its own has, other than, I don't even think Victory Village, Victory Village didn't. Less traffic. So nothing, you know, seems to trigger that. So I don't know, you know, how other communities in the county address that, what theirs look like, if they have them. But it seems since nothing triggers it, yet we're increasing traffic and everything is adding to that, that that may be something in my mind that would be worth looking at. And I think that's it for the categories you had. And I think the other issue for me is when you look at, you know, we're looking at what we see as things we need to work on in the general plan. The other piece of that, as staff has talked about, is streamlining, you know, what we do currently, what comes before us to lighten the workload. And I think that's going to take a whole separate discussion, because kind of in general, and there's some that you listed in your, you know, your general comments. But I think, you know, some of those things that are proposed, I would have concerns about not having them come to us. But we don't have kind of a perspective on how that would have affected, those items would have affected what we had seen in the last year or two. You know, the cost, the workload, that type of thing. So I see that as a whole separate discussion once we identify what our priorities are.
Thank you. Okay, who's next? Anybody else want to share their thoughts?
I'll go. Well, I think we were all kind of in line. We're all thinking, I think, on the same level. The natural disaster and safety preparedness and education is, I think, very important. I know that there are other agencies that would maybe define, establish standards, especially, I'm thinking about the fire hazard abatement district. I kind of think that that's maybe one level above us or peripheral. But the, you know, to develop and adopt an ordinance, I think, I think would fall in our court to help that along. And it just seems like that is the priority in order to do everything else that we want to do on this list. If there is no Fairfax, then there is nothing to do. So I think we have to, you know, be proactive and prepare as much as possible, especially seeing everything that's happened in the state. So I'm looking at that as in general. I mean, establishing a fire hazard abatement district, I think that does kind of go to the town council level and above to the fire district. The evacuation plan, I kind of think, is the same thing. Then I'm looking down at preservation. And, you know, when you compare that to natural disaster, it kind of seems, well, I don't know, not minor, but it just, it's such a different part of the general plan. But I think, you know, I keep thinking about every time somebody feels that our vernacular or our, you know, our character is under attack, we really don't have anything to point to and say, well, that's what Fairfax is. You know, that's, this is what it's supposed to look like. We talk a lot about, you know, the character and the look and the scale. But we, we don't, I mean, we do have design standards that talk about height and, you know, a lot, coverage ratios. But it would be nice to see something that at least talks about the historic part. And that would also enhance, I think, and contribute to the specialness of our town. I think it's great when I go to other towns and I read about the history and, you know, find out where things kind of started and how the town grew. For me, that just is, you know, I don't know, that kind of makes me tick. And I think that would be something that people could at least refer to as, yeah, this is why we want to preserve Fairfax. And this is what was important, and this is why we grew the way we grew. So I think, you know, it's, there's such a contrast between the historic preservation and natural disaster. But I think, you know, one kind of leads to the other. And I think they're both very important, just in terms of what makes Fairfax so special and unique. The environment, so I'm looking at the environment. I think, you know, just in order to, again, it's about standards and understanding what you're dealing with. So the visually distinctive areas, the GIS, and kind of feeding into that so that people who do come here to develop, you know, have a very clear understanding of what the topography is, where the fire hazards are, where the landslides are. I think that's paramount. So let's see, what else did I have? That kind of goes hand in hand with developing a creek master plan. Implementing programs and funding, I think that's, I kind of feel like maybe there's something else above us that would create and implement programs and funds, maybe at a state level. So I don't know, but I have that as something that I think is important to document. I was looking at the, this is also, what category is this? Environment. I was looking at require new developments and substantial remodels to incorporate low-impact design and best management practices to mitigate stormwater runoff. And that's already taken care of, or a lot of it is taken care of with the, you know, California Energy Standards Codes. It seems like California is a pretty big leader in that already to get, you know, house to become certified LEED, you know, platinum, gold. It's so expensive to develop and improve existing houses that it's already so hard to get a permit. I think that would be an option, that I don't think it should be a requirement for people who are looking to improve their homes, which in turn improves our neighborhoods and our town. So I kind of feel that would be more penalizing or, you know, punitive than an enhancement. Let's see, again, I think everybody kind of goes back to the improvement of efficiency of traffic flow along Sir Francis Drake. And I know that there was a study that was done, I think, by San Anselmo. And we kind of got a report that, you know, said that it had already been looked at or the people were looking at it. But I think that was maybe when Jim was transitioning. And so I'm not really sure if there was follow-up on that. But that was actually, yeah, Shelley's, Shelley Hamilton's big item. So it would be nice to kind of just revisit that. And maybe it doesn't have to be as one of our top five, but at some point, it would be nice to know where that left off. Let's see. Preserving existing low, lower-income units, that's under housing. I'm not really sure if this is addressing what our citizen, Roberta, is that, okay, was talking about. But this does seem to be a problem, I think, just in general, in development, where, you know, it's one thing to preserve what we have. It's another thing to introduce affordable housing. And it's so expensive to introduce affordable housing. And I don't know how this ties back to SB thirty-five, but just in my experience, because I have been working on some of these projects, and I don't know what the answer is here, but I kind of, kind of see this as a priority because of the deregulation. I'm not really sure how much control we have over California laws. But I have seen how other towns are trying to control the standards. And I think SB thirty-five gives towns and cities a discretion to tailor and customize the standards, you know, so that not everybody could build a twelve-hundred-square-foot in-law unit. So I think somehow this ties into what we're talking about here. Again, I don't know how much control we have. I'm not sure we can say no unless there is no land to develop. And then this also kind of ties back to why some of these accessory dwelling units are so expensive. One, it's very expensive to build a new dwelling, period, whether it's a second dwelling, if it's part of an existing, you know, footprint. But what I'm seeing, and I don't know how we want to address it, is that a lot of towns are making it very, very expensive to develop these accessory dwelling units. And so when people do develop them, they turn around and, you know, basically have the new tenants pay for that cost, you know, just to kind of break even. And so, I mean, we're seeing, I've seen like eighty thousand dollars in just soft costs, you know. That's not even the, you know, the construction or the infrastructure. So I don't know what the answer is. But I know that, I tend to think that that's kind of driving some of the cost. And maybe it wouldn't really deter people from, you know, asking for so much rent. But I somehow think there's a connection there where people are trying to recover the expenses of developing something new, you know. A lot of times, we see people moving out of their houses and into the accessory dwelling units. And so there is more housing available, but it's a house. It's not, you know, one-bedroom unit. So it's very, very complicated. I appreciate your thoughts on what you said. I'm not sure, and I kind of understand why Ben wants to kind of sink his teeth into it and get some of our meetings more streamlined, because that's a big one. Ordinances, again, I'm just looking at ordinance down that says, develop and adopt an ordinance when wide-scale destruction has occurred. I think that goes back to number one. And I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Michelle or Laura, do you guys have thoughts here?
I don't want to add too much more. Originally, I thought my focus was going to be on the disaster ordinance. But in light that there's a pending application, I kind of, I'm shifting my focus on what would probably be better to, you know, help in the review of the applications, such as the visually distinctive air map, clustering of development, the ridgeline ordinance. So I kind of see that as higher priorities. And then put disaster kind of after that, and then some of these other ones after.
Thank you. Michelle?
So my initial thinking is that I'm actually in support of the staff's recommendations in the staff report, that they've got four recommendations here about streamlining processes. And I've worked with a number of jurisdictions that already do this, and this is fairly standard, that if you have a code, as an example, that says, if you have a flat parcel and you're proposing a six-foot-high fence and it's consistent with the property line and it's not in a front yard, then just construct it, and it's not pink, or, you know, whatever we all decide. So I'm in support of the recommended changes here to free up staff in order to do the harder work. So that would be one of my votes. I'm feeling like I'm consistent with everybody else here in terms of the historic and the environmental recommendations. I do want to see the Cassidy Baker Historic Building Inventory done. And then it would be really nice to have a part of that, really look at kind of our music-related history or other aspects of the community that made Fairfax, so that we can have that documented. But I loved what Norma said, kind of branching from that then into clarifying the village.
But I loved what Norma said, kind of branching from that then into clarifying the village character, and then from that, developing the form-based codes. So I think that's, that's the direction I'm in support of. Regarding visually distinctive areas, I'm also in support of the, the resource map and the ridgeline protection. And I think that does mean re-looking at how we treat zoning codes in the hillside. We can't define hillside height the same, building height the same. We can't, how things are measured can't be the same. What we're really protecting, I think, has to look, we have to be really clear about what we want, if we're valuing trees, if we're not valuing construction. Or is it okay if it's green building and it's on a ridge? So, you know, really being clear about that. I think that also kind of relates to the Climate Action Plan and the update in that. So I, I think I've got to figure out where we are with that and the status of that. From a transportation standpoint, I feel like spending staff resources on a traffic study, I'd rather have that put off to a developer defined by staff if we're going to have traffic counts done, or having that as part of the capital improvement program or staff-related. I'm more in support of implementing a pedestrian and bicycle master plan and more emphasis on walking and biking and access to transportation than on an emphasis on single occupancy vehicles. From a housing, so my fifth item is really housing, and it, and it has to do with housing element implementation. From my perspective, I, I'd like to hear from the, the town attorney about the Senate bills that we heard about earlier, and particularly how it affects our ability to make decisions in the future. I, I do support the no-net-loss idea. I, I go so far as to mandate affordability, so I don't really know where we all are on that. But I'm, I'm, I'm saying, let's go to in-lu fees, let's have no net loss, and let's go to mandatory affordability. Regarding the emergency plan, that would be a sixth item for me. But I'm more on a resiliency plan than an emergency plan. I feel like an EOC plan or emergency plan exists. It would need to be, you know, it's already there. I, I, I'm more around, what are the, the difficult decisions if we have a major disaster? Meaning, when things start to fall, are we going to say certain businesses should open first? Or are we going to say, we're just going to allow mass building permits to occur? And what does that mean, and where? Are we going to pull back in creek areas more so than we have now? So that's where I, I kind of think about more than where are the fire areas or where are the flood areas? It's more resiliency. So that's more a sixth item for me, more because I don't really have history on where, what, what information we have, and how does it relate to roles of other agencies or departments and work that's already been done? So, thank you.
Can I add to that? You know, one of the things that you said is about resiliency, and I actually had that on my list about retrofitting, seismically retrofitting certain buildings, I guess. Let's see, priority structures is what it's called. And at, you know, at some point, we should try to figure out if we want our fire department, our fire station up and running after a disaster, you know, a grocery store, maybe, I don't know, churches where people, where you can bring people, you know, after their house has fallen. So I think it kind of goes back to that resiliency. We need, I don't want to say an assembly room, kind of what they did in Houston, where they had the stadiums where they could actually take people. So there should be some basic services that remain open and functional. So I keep thinking like, you know, all the EMS, fire department, police.
That should be a part of the EOC plan.
Okay, well, maybe that's already in there. But in terms of seismically upgrading these structures, I don't know if that's what this is talking about.
It's an interesting comment, because when Napa had their earthquake, gosh, I guess it was about 10 years ago, maybe a little bit less than that. Downtown Napa had one Safeway, and it was closed, I believe, for six months. And there were a lot of at-risk communities, people, residents who did not have the ability to drive somewhere else to get their groceries. And yet, there wasn't a provision to say, hey, open a tent out in the parking lot tomorrow. And those are the type of examples where, you know, when you're making priority decisions or places to, to stage for debris removal. People, if you know people who are dealing with the aftermath of the Napa or Santa Rosa fires, huge issue. But it's one of those things where nobody wants it in their neighborhood, because it's 724 noise and light, things like that. But those are the kind of tough decisions where if you can say, okay, that's the spot, or we really need to get these type of local services back onboard immediately, and this means that we're just going to waive parking requirements and just move it out into the parking lot for as long as it takes to restore the building. So those are really important decisions that a community would make, could make ahead of time to really facilitate getting back on your feet after the disaster.
So, so that would include seismically retrofitting some of these structures, or making sure that they could withstand, you know, a major earthquake?
Yeah, I mean, if we're doing, what we've seen that, that's happening with the hospitals, where they're saying, no, these are critical facilities, and you have to bring them up to standard. So I'm not sure what shape our firehouse is in. Hopefully, it's pretty rugged. But certainly, that would be examples of the government buildings. We know that we've been flooded out, fortunately, I wasn't here. But it could happen again. And, you know, those are the type of examples where, hey, floods are relatively short-term in nature. But those type of things, that could disable government facilities. Maybe that should be a priority to say, okay, how do we, how do we start retrofitting those now so that they have that ability to withstand those shocks and can function in that immediate post-disaster and beyond environment?
Oh, with some metal boats. Some metal boats. I, I hear metal is the way to go instead of rubber rafts.
So I'm going to share my thoughts now. The, my big-picture thoughts are that there's a whole lot of dominos that kind of lean on each other in here. And, you know, you kind of want to go back and find the important ones at the beginning, but there's other things leaning on them. So it's a, a kind of a crazy domino castle, trying to figure out how to get at what the keys are, you know? Like Creek Health, maybe that has something to do with flooding. I don't know. So looking at the pieces in the, in the table about the general plan programs, and hearing what you guys are saying about things that may not be in the planning commission's purview in terms of disaster preparedness and recovery, I'm wondering if one idea is to reach out to those that are in that position, fire, police, cert, people, and get recommendations from them on some of these general plan issues. And I don't necessarily think you want that next month. But, you know, if we talk about kind of checking in on this workshop again in middle of the year, maybe August or something like that, you know, in the meantime, is there some feedback they could give us about, about what they see as, you know, where we, the direction the town should be going in some of the general plan implementation programs that they're more responsible for? I think another sort of head domino is, is the historic preservation. And as you said, I think that may be one of the keys to trying to protect ourselves down the road from, you know, state laws that might try to limit our ability to control what's happening in town. And maybe historic preservation would have a little bit more power to, to sort of protect us as I think would environmental risks that we tied to things like flood. So to the extent, as Michelle pointed out, you know, we want to talk about a creek protection ordinance or something, or, or a creek master creek study. I think that those things will, you know, kind of get us down the road towards placing ourselves in a better position to protect ourselves from efforts to limit our control. We talked about that with the state density bonus laws and, and adopting our own, and Katie's recommendations on that. I'm still unclear about the extent to which we can, as a municipality, undermine those bonus, bonuses and, and not be just giving more to developers as opposed to pulling back on, you know, sort of overdevelopment in Fairfax. And obviously, you know, the, the big housing crisis has got to be foremost in our minds in terms of, you know, helping increase, you know, the availability of affordable units in Fairfax. And I think that even though I have some concerns, like that Cindy expressed, about going too far in a streamlining, I do think a priority is to help free up staff time to address some of these larger issues. So in that way, I'm totally down with trying to figure out a way to make it more efficient of a process without losing the things that we would feel really strongly about in terms of our control. So, you know, it's another domino, because if we can free up more time, then we can maybe take a, a bigger look at the other things we want to deal with. So in, in terms of the ordinances, you know, the ones that seem like low-hanging fruit that are going to make your life easy, like, okay, an ordinance limiting the time and application can remain incomplete. We talked about that at the workshop. And, you know, let's start talking about streamlining and ministerial permits, because, you know, it's not like I, I don't, I'm not cautious about it, but I think we've got to just start talking about it. So making it easier for people to turn a unit into an affordable, turn a garage, turn, you know, a spare room into an affordable unit, I think I totally agree with you. You know, that's, that's where we're going to come in to hopefully make affordability without destroying the character of our town. And I don't know the extent to which there are things that are so beyond our control. Like, people tell me that it's the water hookups that are going to cost them an arm and a leg, right? So I'd like to understand more about those, those costs that we were talking about. And, and, you know, where do we have any leverage in making it easier for somebody to, to turn a, I hate to say garage, because of the parking issues, but turn a, I don't know.
A studio.
A studio, an artist's space into a granny unit, or whatever.
Utilities are about $50,000.
Yeah, yeah, it's crazy.
It's the utility lines.
So, you know, you can, guys can take all these disparate, I don't agree that we were all on the same page, Esther. I think we were all over the place. And I think you guys are going to have a real challenge trying to, you know, pull out some threads here and, and come back to us with some kind of organized cohesive plan that we're all going to buy off on. I love that.
That's why the planning director gave you a second set, because we're hoping that now you verbally said what your priorities are. You're now going to number the top five on your new list, correct?
Yes, and, and-
And then we're going to try to own it down a little more.
Recognizing that, we also know that the commission discussed a lot of things that go outside the general plan. So those are certainly part and parcel of what our priorities are going to be.
Okay, I would just like to add one item that I didn't bring up, but it's my number four. Incorporating lighting restrictions for commercial and replacement street lighting. I think that, one, we could have better requirements for new developments. And two, we should, or the town should look at replacing our street lighting. I understand you can, not, not replacing the standards, but the bulbs. I understand that there's tremendous savings that can be reached by getting more efficient light bulbs in, in streetlights. But that is one item. And, and just to follow on, on Linda's request, I will give you my one to five. My number one is, oh. Are we not ready there?
I think there's a, a way we can do it at the meeting tonight and potentially emerge-
You want us to put it on the new form, the clean form you gave us?
I think we can just go down the list, item by item, and we can just add those up, and then we'll have the count.
Okay, and then afterwards, we'll talk about the zoning amendments?
Sure.
Okay.
So Linda's giving me a skeptical look, but I-
No, I'm not giving a skeptical look, I'm just, are we going to read it out loud?
Yeah, we're just- Just to do that at the end? Okay, we, we could spend another hour just tabulating and discussing. But if you want to give us your top five, we can, we can take that up. We could report the, the results out to all in Sundry.
Do you want us to just write our top five? I, one, two, just number them, one, two, three, four, five, on the clean sheets for you? Okay.
I think what I did was I gave you my top five, kind of under those, when I talked about, you know, housing and transportation and environment. Some of the things that kind of I approached may not be-
Yes, but we're trying to get a work program. And so this is direct, these are directly from your general plan. And we need to be able to take something from the general plan forward to the council. We've taken notes on your, on, you know, how you, how, some of these kind of are expanded into encompassing other things, right? Right, but we're trying to, am I explaining this correctly?
You're working within the framework of what we've whittled down here.
They're going to have, they're going to have the minutes from your meeting. So they're going to have the minutes on what you all said. When it goes forward to the council, they'll be able to read, you know, your thoughts. But we're trying to give them your top five, you know, we're trying to give them your top five so that they can either agree with them or decide they want to do something else.
Yeah, keeping in mind that-
But they'll have your minutes, which will have all your thoughts, I mean, all your points that you made. That will go along with the finalized top-five recommendations, correct?
Yeah, and I do appreciate all the comments, because I think that the context is critical when we're relaying these recommendations to the council. I think that'll be very useful to, to them to say, oh, okay, so this is why you're not looking at general plan element, blah, blah, blah. You're saying it's under this category, we think that's the most important. Or, you know, these are the contexts, why we think that this is kind of like the, what do they call that when you're building those doorways? And it's the one that's right, the keystone or something like that, or the domino? So I, I think those, those comments are really important and will be, something we'll certainly focus on in the-
Well, I think I can do that. I mean, with the, the five, or for the five that I gave you, I can tie those to the general plan.
Yeah, so that's great.
Into those categories, so.
Yeah, if you just want to-
Which is what we want.
Yeah, but our, our hope is, again, you know, this is-
It may not be here, but I can tie them to the general plan.
I don't think they want them tied to the general plan.
Well, we want general plan programs.
It has to be from the implementation list, and you already narrowed it down at your workshop to these. So if you're, if you're saying you want to try to bring in something that's, we've already gone beyond, we're trying to focus-
Are you on the mic?
Not, because I forget to turn it on. So we're trying, so you, at your workshop, you took your big, huge general plan implementation, and we got it narrowed down to this. But now we're trying to narrow from this sheet. We understand that, you know- We understand that, you know, I think one of the comments you made about the historic preservation issue, it kind of works with, if you can define what your historic downtown character is, that can work towards recovery, how you want your town to recover, it can work towards how you want new affordable housing to look. We got all your comments about that, but what we're trying to do is take forward five concrete from the whole, the implementation packet forward to the council. Because if we try to go backwards-
So if I could-
And they may just say we don't agree with any of yours, right?
So, for example, on the historic preservation, the way the program is written, establish an ordinance for protecting, maintaining, rehabilitating, and enhancing historical and cultural resources. And, and what we discussed was a slight variation of that, which is get Cassidy on board because she's already offered to start working on this, to do something differently. So, for example, if I put a, a number by that one, it's not because I think we need to be working on an ordinance, but rather, we need to be pursuing that other tangent that we've been discussing.
Yeah, and I'll follow up briefly on that, too, is that this is, a lot of people look at a, the general plan as kind of a cuneiform stone, or Rosetta Stone, I'm mixing my parables, but the idea is, what, what we're seeing is, is what the general plan helps us do is to say, here's the latest factors. We've got these state influences, we've got affordability, all these weigh into why that, what I'm hearing, and I've heard it from, I think, a pretty good consensus of the commission, and in fact, coming out of the workshop, there were six commission consensus votes for that, is, so what we're doing is we're providing additional context that really goes outside it and maybe changes it a little bit in how it's going to get carried forward. And, and we, we get that, but it, it's just really helpful for us to have, you know, something that says, yeah, it, it just, this ended up on all the commissioners present at this meeting's list.
So because I am going to put a number by that one, I'm also going to write a little note, get Cassidy going. And I recommend that other commissioners who feel like, hey, you know, I can, this is my priority, but it's a little bit of a tangent or something, write a little note just to clarify for staff so that they can go back to your, to your statement and refresh themselves on where you were coming out on that piece.
Right, because then when Ben takes a staff report forward to the council, he can say, this was identified as item one, and they want to start focusing on doing an inventory, having an inventory done, that would be the first step. You don't have to necessarily accomplish the whole thing in one year, but we set a work program to try to work towards the goal of having an ordinance, right? That's what we're-
So for historical preservation, right, so you've got one item on here. Establish an ordinance for protecting, maintaining, rehabbing, enhancing historical and cultural resources.
But it says ongoing.
Right.
Yeah, so it's something, yeah.
But that's, that's what you're telling us to, to number.
Right.
So what I did for historical preservation is I went back to the general plan and identified the policies that I see as important to work on, and then under that I put, you know, inventory, then identify local, sort of, you know, the things I talked about. So do you want me to give you this?
Both, yes.
You want both, because we have to somehow try-
Right, so then I would need probably to send this to you, because these are my notes.
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Awesome.
Absolutely.
Any notes anyone wants to send to us, they can send to us.
But you still have to do this.
Just, I'm sorry, but just to clarify, we're, we're not beholden to having to pick one cat, one item from each category. We can pick three from one category and zero from another category, correct?
Or, or in the explanatory, what do they call that, legislative history or something like that? What Cindy's doing is saying, she went back and there's, I think there's about three pages of historic programs, and so she's saying, ah, these are, these are why this is a priority for me, because there's all this other stuff that feeds into it. Or, you know, as other commissioners have noted, this talks about downtown character, which might assist in recovery and rebuilding, and also help us do form-based codes, which could be critical for us to preserve any kind of local say in what a, a non-discretionary, multifamily housing development might look like if it were to occur in Fairfax.
Is this going to probably weigh in on you back?
Oh, yeah. Public comment?
It'll probably be at the end, if she wants to go.
Okay, come on.
It's the least profound comment you'll hear. About traffic flow, I'm passing this forward from Diane Hoffman, who passed away in November. She and I loitered outside the scoop for quite a while, watching traffic, on purpose for that reason. And to take a page out of Larry Bragman's book, a can of paint would help a whole lot at the intersection right there. If you made an arrow, just curving, all right, you're on Sir Francis Drake, okay, and the scoop and everything's over here, you're making the right, and then you're making the quick left onto center, an arrow that went like that would change a lot, because we watched so many people, like, they, they made the right, and then they didn't know what to do, and they started to look all around, and they were just clogging up traffic, and they clogged up over here, then they would clog up over there. That arrow would really change things, because the people coming on center from the bank could see the arrow, and they would know that that traffic was going to go straight, like, I mean, it was going to curve, curve to the left. That's my suggestion. I won't even charge you any consultation fees. It might cost a can of paint, and thank you for all your work. I mean, it was really wonderful to hear your priorities and to hear the scope and the content, and I'm very glad I had a chance to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
So I've done my, my final five, and then is this the time to discuss the ordinance amendments to streamline staff resources?
Well, has everybody had a chance to lock in their votes?
No.
I'm still working.
Okay, I want to make sure everybody has a chance.
Can, can we have six?
No.
For you?
No.
Well, one of the things that I fully expect is that we'll have about 10 that receive some votes, so it doesn't bother me if we sort of, you know, dribble, okay, sorry. Absolutely not, it's going to be five.
We have to remain in control, Ben.
No, this is after the meeting's adjourned, then we can look at, never mind. Sidebar discussion later.
So one of these, the enact density bonus zoning and other incentives, is where I'm going to put my tie-in to the density bonus ordinance. It's not clear from, because again, what the narrative on the spreadsheets are, aren't the full kind of scope of, of the statement from the general plan, but that's where I'm tying that in, and you'll see that when you get my 10-page dissertation on my reasons for this.
And I can even probably refer you to the government code section that specifically talks about density bonus.
I already have a copy.
But remember when you read these, that it was, it was a community effort, it was done by citizens that might not necessarily know that the way you enact the density bonus zoning is by adopting an ordinance. So they, they put down, you know what I'm saying?
But, no, we want your 10-page dissertation. Because if we, if we read our notes and we're confused, then we'll be able to look at your notes and become unconfused.
Can, can I ask you a question, just so I can prioritize my natural disaster? So a fire evacuation plan for the highest fire hazard areas, Norma, you were, you were saying that the, is it EOS?
EOC.
EOC.
EOP.
Operations.
Plan, the EOC.
So that already exists?
I haven't seen it, but Cindy says-
I've, I've seen, I've worked with it, I've seen the EOP, but the issue with disaster plans, they're not specific. They're going to depend on what the disaster is, and, and then how you're going to be directed to evacuate. But that is addressed in, you know, the emergency operations plan.
The emergency operations plan, though, should have, who's in charge, where is the building where people can go to for refuge, what is the process, where will you set up a staging area? If, if there's fires burning in one neighborhood, or whatever the disaster is, the plan has to be flexible enough to say, okay, you need a staging area for supplies, regardless of whether it's a fire, or a flood, or an earthquake. You need a place for people to go where they can be safe. You need a way to bring food to the first responders, you need a way to bring medical care, you need a, you know, you need a place to park cars, you need to be able to break into the market and get the food and the water that you need. That's all in the, that all should be in the plan.
But again, it, it's disaster, it's event-specific, so it's not going to address those things. It's going to address how the EOC is set up, how the different elements work in it, what the mutual aid process is, but it's not going to be specific to say, you know, everybody's going to go to the baseball field. It's going to be driven by the event. So it doesn't have that specificity in it. But the town does have an emergency operations plan.
Our town does.
Our town is required to have it.
Right, but I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, is are we talking about revisiting that and modifying it?
It would not include, if half the town burns down, how do you rebuild it? That would not be included. It deals with the immediate emergency of how do you handle it, not necessarily how do you rebuild afterwards.
So if it's, but if it's already part of our town plan, then why is it here? Are we proposing that it be revisited, enhanced, modified?
We need to look at it and review it and see what's missing.
I'm sorry, yeah, we need to, I've never read it, I, I mean, I've been in other cities' EOC plans, so that's how I know. But, yeah, we should look at it and then see, you know, if it can be tweaked in, in ways that, that would be helpful.
It, it might be as simple as putting up some signs on Cascade Drive saying evacuation route, which would also remind people that, you know, this is, it's kind of like when you leave a theater, you want to be walking, not running, because everybody's got to go out that route. I know that this was a hot topic discussion that Todd Lando addressed at length in that very excellent Saturday workshop that he and Ray did, and, and other, other people participated, including Cindy. But evacuation is kind of a, it's, you can get as granular as you want on that, because, for example, you could say, well, what happens if the fire occurs in the middle of the night? And instead of, you know, you file out in a nice orderly progression, you know, you're looking down canyon, and there's a lot of flames, you know, on the only way out, now what do you do? I mean, one of the things they emphasized at that workshop is you don't go on a fire road and start heading off into, into the chaparral. So, but those are the type of discussions. Now, having talked about that, the, my first comment was, that's really not the planning commission's purview, except to say that, yeah, this is kind of important, and probably if there's information out there about evacuation routes in the event of X or Y disaster, I mean, obviously, if it's a flood, you don't want to go on an evacuation route where Baldiness Road is underwater. So that might be one where you say, really, you're supposed to stay put unless you're in one of these flood areas, and by the way, here's the flood area. So you folks probably need to be kind of, you know, sleeping with one eye open, or, you know, be very aware of how close to flooding we may be, and know that when the siren rings, you know, sounds off, that means it's time to go, versus in a fire scenario where it's, you know, you're going to someplace else. So there's a lot of conversations. I, I think just the mere fact that the planning commission has discussed that at length would be something that we would recommend to the council as something that, yeah, it's probably a good opportunity for additional dialogue with the citizenry, and maybe making some information available to those folks so that they kind of understand. I mean, one of the comments about the siren, for example, is that it's like, you know, somebody just running around going, hey, 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 it doesn't really tell you, you know, the direction, the specific issue, or anything like that. So, is there a way to get that information? Yeah, it's called register your cellphone and keep it on a nightstand at night, so that if that thing rings in the middle of the night, you know, it's a message, a pre-recorded message that's telling you, hey, guess what, we've got a fire problem, things like that.
But, you know, also, one thing I learned from Todd Lando, I've heard him speak twice, and I know the effort that the Cascade neighborhood is undergoing, and really, it comes down to each neighborhood needs to be aware and find out and work with your neighbors and figure out what you're all going to do, because nobody's going to come and save us. That metal boat isn't coming, no one's going to come with a, you know, a big tractor and pull me out of there. You and your neighbors and your immediate family need to have a plan, and that's the most critical thing, and I'm not sure people quite get that yet.
Yeah, and to follow up on that, and Commissioner Swift is well aware of this, is that the efforts that have been spearheaded by the upper Cascade group, but with Ray Moritz and Todd Lando, and the Fire Wise Neighborhood Effort, and, you know, they split, correct me if I'm wrong, Cindy, but I think there's six neighborhoods in, in the community, and I think two of them will have a Fire Wise Community Effort. So when we talk about a fire hazard plan, they're well on the way to developing that, and it is very much a grassroots effort and something that requires ongoing attention, could result in reduced insurance rates and things like that. So a very worthy cause, again, something that the Fire Wise people and the Fire Safe Marin people are doing, and that I'm hearing discussion with the planning commission, and certainly this was a consensus item at the workshop. So again, it's not the purview of this commission, but I'm aware of these Fire Wise Community Efforts. So to the extent that those fire department-directed efforts can be supported, or if there's areas where we could have that conversation with them and say, you know, how are we doing? I mean, where are we kind of still not really following up? And this would be specifically directed at somebody like Todd Lando, because I've already reached out to him and said, hey, Todd, I'd love to take you out to lunch and discuss all these natural disaster, fire-related things, and try to figure out what is, you know, the town, what's the fire department, what could be the planning commissioner, planning staff, recognizing that there's a lot of work we're not going to be able to do.
Should we remind them about what Bruce said?
What did Bruce say?
I just, I just want to remind you guys that what Bruce said, he sat on the G-PIC that created this list. When they weren't sure who to assign something to, they assigned it to the planning commission. So, yeah, so some, you told us that, okay, someone told me that. Mimi told me that. So, so when you, you know, you're seeing this disaster stuff, it isn't necessarily within your purview, but you can, we'll relay to the council that, like Ben has said, he'll relay to the council that it's, it's very important to you, and they need to take some action, either giving money to the fire department, or the fire board to get on it, or, you know, putting money where their mouth is, or, right? They need to make a decision as to how to do it, not you guys. Right?
Okay.
The restoration.
Okay, so does anybody need a little break, or shall we plow through?
Well, I think we're down to the, the aspect of the streamlining measures, and if we wanted to just tackle that, we could probably convene, or, just-
Through the chair, a couple of brief comments. Basically, I agree with all your recommendations with a few caveats. In terms of the 50% remodel, you're suggesting that we match the Ross Valley Fire definition, and I would rather use- that we match the Ross Valley Fire definition, and I would rather use the San Anselmo, uh, policy, uh, which is, uh, less than 50%, or it, it's not a percentage, but at 150 square feet remodel, and at 250, and at 500 square feet remodel. There are certain thresholds that, um, make your gray water or your, uh, green, um, building mo- somewhat more restrictive. Uh, they have a very, very streamlined, very nice, uh, plan. Um, my, my, really, my only other comment, I like, um, the idea of, uh, not all modifications requiring a use permit, and I think that I would like to see, uh, before just saying absolutely go for anything, I would like to see some examples of what we've done in the past, some design-based graphics that show, for instance, if you place, uh, a tandem space, parking space here, it would be okay. If you place it over there in the right-of-way or in, um, in your setback, that might not be okay. Or if you build a new bedroom, as long as it conforms with the design of your home, or, or certain architectural standards, uh, or sizes, or, you know, that type of stuff, with some, some general guidelines that we could look at and say, okay, that, that, that's acceptable. Yes, we've done that, or we haven't done, uh, this other. And that really is my only comment. Other than, uh, yes, we need to hold that study session on what the new California codes are so that, uh, we can be clear on the density bonuses, uh, which can be different, which would be different for each development, in fact, and each development, as did the senior housing project, had its own density bonus and incentive agreements and documents that are required as part of the entitlement. And that's it.
Okay, um, incomplete application time limits, I'm good with that. And probably, and I think we, it might be in here already, um, well, that gets into the use permits. So I'm, I'm good with the incomplete application piece of that. Um, the 50% remodel change to match Ross Valley Fire definition significant versus 50%. I'm unclear on that one as to the significance of going from significant instead of 50% and what you all were thinking with that. So at this point, I would need to have more information on that. Um, the covered parking and tandem parking, I'd have to look at that as well. Um, preservation of open space, I'm not sure, consider adopting regulations requiring, I'm not sure what that means, retention of natural areas.
I think I need to remind you guys about one thing. This list, a lot of it came from the planning commission. It, it, staff didn't come up with all of this. So, um, for instance, that changed the definition to match the Ross Valley Fire Department. I think Phil, I think Phil brought that one up. Um, but anyway, we can give a better description.
Okay, yeah, because that isn't necessarily then reducing workload, potentially.
But Ben, I think what I'm hearing from them is that this isn't, we need to give them a better description of what these things mean, because they don't really understand what they're trying to give back, give us the power to approve.
Well, I thi- I mean.
I mean, I can address some of them right now.
I mean, you did, you guys also did a narrative. So you had a narrative, you know, the incomplete application time limits. Fine.
You talked about, um. Oh, you did get that. Okay, that talks about.
Yeah, that's.
There's no point, there's no point in prohibiting tandem parking when the state laws for second units now say that you can park wherever you want, and you can, you can't prohibit tandem parking?
But is that only for second units? See, so that I would need more information.
To me, now that you can convert existing garages, and you can do all these things, and we can't regulate them, and you can put your parking wherever you want, what is the point of the town having an ordinance prohibiting certain things if you can take a bedroom of your house and make it into a second unit, and we can't require any additional parking? You know what I'm saying? It seems like.
Yeah, but I guess.
So you get it when the house is first built, but then a year later, nobody has to comply with it.
There's considering amendments to discuss, so those aren't necessarily reducing workload, all of these. So these, some of these are what, you know, commissioners, um, submitted.
But, yeah.
Right.
Just further to that topic, on the tandem, I, what, what Linda's getting at is we would like to eliminate that res- that requirement, or that restriction, that prohibition, because what we're recognizing, again, the state in their, in their wisdom have said, yeah, you can do tandem parking wherever you want, and if you're within, uh, a half a mile of the bus line, you can't require it anyway. So our attitude is, let's allow tandem parking wherever, and, and that'd be one less thing that we have to worry about, and homeowners would have to try to agonize over, oh gee, we can maybe squeeze in it here, or we can't do, or can't we just do tandem parking to meet our parking requirements? Yes, that's our recommendation, is to simply say that the state said tandem is okay, let's make it part of our Fairfax.
Is that regardless of whether it's in a right-of-way or setback?
Well, it has to be on your property, but it can be in a setback.
That actually will decrease work for us, because, and historically, parking was in the side yard setback for, for, for a lot of Fairfax's houses. That's where the part, the driveways went to the garage at the back, that was all in the side yard setback. So that will decrease. It will do both.
Okay, so, so then I'll ignore the preservation of open space, consider adopting regulations. Understand, right. And, and I'm looking at this from the standpoint of things that would reduce workload.
Right.
So, um, substandard parcels, I had some questions. One, going back to wanting to know, um, you know, looking at the last two years, you know, what would have been the impact and what would have come before the planning commission if some of these changes were not required to come to us? Um, you know, what's the workload cost of fiscal, including, um, cost of permitting? Um.
Well, it's, yeah, I, I don't know how much work it would take to put that together. We could do that. Uh, I think just in the six months I've been here, I've seen a number of these, and I, I think it alludes to the fact that there are a lot of substandard parcels, and when you look at a use permit that goes to the planning commission for every time you have a substandard parcel, that's a substantial, uh, that there have been a number of applications. And so again, it's just one of those things where we look at it and say, yeah, you've got a substandard parcel, let's, let's not penalize somebody by saying you have to go get a use permit that goes to the planning commission. It will save us time.
If your proposed addition meets all the setbacks in lot coverage and floor, so you're, you have a second set of regulations that are keeping things away from the property lines and away from the neighbors, you shouldn't just be penalized and have to go through a public hearing process, because in the seventies, Fairfax decided to increase their minimum parcel size requirements, rendering most of their parcels substandard. Right?
Right, and then I think it also was brought up by the town attorney, just the fact that there is a use permit makes it so it can't go on the consent calendar, consent item. That, that recently changed in the last year or two, because those items were on the consent agenda.
Okay, um, again, I mean, I'm coming from the concern of having, you know, when we look back at the things that came before us in the last year, there were things that had public comment and public concerns that, you know, are on here, that things that would not have come to us. So I want to make sure that we maintain that, you know, the, the review of the commission and its purpose, and what I think the community expects from the planning commission and that planning process. Um, so, so tree, the tree regulation, okay? I think in here, you wanted to amend the tree ordinance to enable the staff to issue a tree permit. If, um, the application is accompanied by a report and that it's a dead tree or an emergency, I believe, um, the tree ordinance already gives the ability to do that to the planning commission. Um, uh, eight thirty-six oh forty B gives the planning director the authority to grant permits under certain conditions, so I think that capability is there.
Well, okay, I think I misdescribed that, though, because what I, what staff was really trying to do is to, not just for emergencies, like if someone comes in with a tree report and a, and a certified ISA arborist who doesn't make money from cutting trees, says this tree would be much healthier if you removed more than a fifth of the branches and did this trimming, right? Right now, it has to, staff spends a lot of time on getting an ordinance, um, agendas together, and there's certain tree permits that I think that staff should probably be able to approve.
Okay, and there's.
The emergen- the emergency process is set up, but that's, that's like if it's imminent, the tree is about to fall over, the planning director can approve it. It's a little bit different, and I, I didn't describe it very well.
Right, and there's, you know, there's removing trees, and then there's taking more than 40% of their canopy in a year kind of thing. So there's two parts to, um, the tree ordinance. Um, but having said that, the planning director has, you know, the ability to do emergencies and, 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 well, under certain conditions, right? So there's two or three, two or three in the ordinance. Having said that, the last time the tree ordinance, I guess, was updated was two thousand and nine, and I think it should be reviewed overall for currency. Um, the definitions in it, are they still, still applicable when we look at, um, defensible space, um, you know, fire-resistant landscaping, that type of thing? Um, I think it can be, it can benefit by being reviewed by the tree committee. We have a town arborist who should be part of that process, looking at that, and then us. So I think overall, it probably should be reviewed if we're looking at it for your piece, for one part of it.
Got done before you made a decision as to whether you, yeah.
Well, I think it should be the, I mean, if you're looking at just doing one piece of that and making a change, you should look at the entire ordinance.
It hasn't been done since two thousand and nine.
And we had talked before, I mean, that doesn't even address the process issues we had talked about before with, you know, if we're looking at, um, removing trees, like for a project or an application, does that need to go to the tree committee first before it comes to us? So that should be all of that, I think, should be, should be looked at. Um, and then you talked about, you know, the common agenda items that you wanted to, to change. Um, so, and I think those are, and you've got a list of them there. I would want to see, because some of those have come before us, and there have been concerns and issues from the community. I would need to have, like, more information on each of those, so probably looking at them individually to see if there are things that, um, could be done over the counter. Um, you know, we talk about fences, uh, we talk about public right-of-way and carports and those types of things. Um, you know, several use permits, substandard parcels, how does that address acceler- accessory structures? You know, um, are we talking about when, you know, minor changes, are they changes, um, internal? You know, is somebody putting a bathroom inside a, a house? That might need some kind of review by us versus something to the outside of the building. So those are some of the concerns I had when we looked at these individually. And then, um, my last one was on, um, you know, like permits in general, do they have, uh, a length of time? You know, we talk about things like signed permits and, and those types of things where we haven't seen the results of those. So looking at kind of timing and, and that type of thing in general.
Expira- like the expiration dates?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that bothers the town attorney, that some of our permits expire and some don't. But, okay, so.
That's not necessarily taking workload off of you, but it's looking at, at those items.
The feeling that some of you are not ready to let go of some of this until you get more information from us, which is more work, yeah. Um, so do it, I mean, maybe we could get a, a consensus, maybe I should speak out of turn. Do, do you all think that maybe if we went over the last year and brought you the number of, like, fence height variance? Let me give you an example. Next month, you are going to get a retaining wall height variance. The retaining wall has to be eight feet because it's repairing a slide. There's no way that we can say it can only be six feet in height, because it wouldn't retain the, the dangerous slope. That's the kind of thing when we say, you know, height variances. It's just like some of them shouldn't, it seems like it's just a waste of everybody's time for them, for stuff like that to come here. And so there should be some, so, I got off track. So if we went through a year and brought you, like, for a year, how many fence height variances you processed and what the issues were, do you think that would help you maybe let go of some of these, or, um, because I'm getting the feeling that some of you don't, don't, you know, you're not convinced that, that, that really that should be given, made a, made a responsibility of the staff, that all these things require
Well, I think there's just not enough, you know, background information, like you said, to see, you know, kind of where your thinking is for some of those items.
Yeah, I think.
I was asked to just come up with things that I thought could be taken away from staff, um.
No, from the commission.
I mean, just, you know, taken away from the commission.
Careful.
Whatever, you know?
No, the, the idea is that.
But I know that you're always going to have a difficult, you're going to have the difficult issues, like the one where the guy was a lot of feet away and put in a window, and there was one neighbor that had a problem with it. There's always going to be those exceptions to things that, to most people seem reasonable, and you shouldn't continue to have a public hearing process for every single item, just because, you know, once every couple of years, you have a difficult situation between two neighbors.
Yeah.
That's why if, if you do let go of these, some of these things, there will be an appeal process worked in, where the neighbors will be notified, and if they really feel that whatever the staff has approved is not reasonable, they will have the ability to get it in front of you.
And one of the things that I think you talked about in here was, you know, doing the normal notice process on anything that.
Right.
You're going to, and, and the question I had is, is, you know, by normal notice process, did you mean just the 300 feet or the normal notice process?
Yes.
You would do to the neighbors versus how we are seeing these items now that go on the agenda, that then go out to anybody that signs up for planning commission information? So if you're doing these things, if we make these changes, would they then, they wouldn't even go under a consent calendar to be on an agenda that anybody would see?
I think, I think you guys could come up with whatever you wanted, because if we, if we set up a process so that staff would have ministerial review of certain things, there's no reason why we wouldn't set a date for, like, to make a decision on five of them. We could come up with a little draft description and send it out to everybody that's requested an agenda, so they would know that these things were happening at the, I mean, is that kind of what you're envisioning?
Yeah, it's not necess- it could be ministerial.
I'm a little uncomfortable about us talking about this level of detail when the ordinance isn't before us.
Right.
We haven't notified anybody in the public. We're considering ordinance modifications, and we're getting into a high level of detail without public input.
Well, we, we. Well, we, we have actually put this on the agenda for some of these, you know, common agenda items, and this is high level. One of the things we acknowledge at a staff level is these type of conversations are going to be repeated at the council, and they'll, they'll have their own position. What we're trying to do is look at areas that are common agenda items that seem to be relatively high staff resource, and, you know, that's a relative term. Obviously, you know, somebody's doing a deck expansion or a stair landing, that's not a lot of staff work, but it's, it's some. And looking at other jurisdictions and what they assign to staff to administer, and, and situations where it's a fence, okay, let's have a standard for a fence. If it's more than four feet tall and a front yard setbacks, the, the last two have to be fifty percent open. You know, we can come up with whatever standards and have that conversation, but the idea is it doesn't become something that takes thirty or sixty or ninety days to get to the planning commission and this back and forth with applicants, things like that. It's, it's more, it becomes a routine process. And that type of recommendation from your commission, if that's a consensus of your commission, could then go to the council with more detailed recommendations. I think we've got an idea of what we're looking for. Certainly, you know, again, timing out applications that just sit there since 2011. I mean, to me, you know, that's pretty obvious, somebody's not capable of, of following through with an application, it's stale, it's going to be, it just hurts the process, we want it off our desks. So, substandard parcels, again, as Linda pointed out, this is something that meets all the other setbacks. So to, it's almost punitive to an applicant to say that, yeah, we changed the zoning and now you're, now you're going to have to go through a use permit because your lot no longer meets the setback standards. Tandem parking, you know, the state's saying you could do a, a, a second unit, an accessory dwelling unit with zero discretionary review, you can put tandem parking in with zero discretionary review, or if you're within a half a mile, you don't have to do parking at all. I mean, it's done. I mean, that, that whole conversation, yeah, there are issues where neighbors may be upset, but the reality is the state has spoken and said, we don't care about parking anymore, especially not tandem parking. So this is, you know, if somebody can put two units on a parcel, have two units on a parcel and tandem parking wherever they want it, you know, it's pointless to retain that in our regulations for somebody who isn't even proposing another unit in that level of intensification. So those are the type of things where we could have that conversation, how many do we look at, et cetera? But this is just a, a housekeeping improvement that just says, this is the, the regulatory context that we live in, it's time to let this stuff go. Now, the question is, is the commission comfortable with a consensus recommendation, or is this just something that we come back and look at how many we have, et cetera, as we are able to do it? And that's, that's the question I have before your commission tonight.
I gave you a yes on everything with a couple of little caveats.
Correct, thank you.
Because there are alternatives. I mean, if you guy, if, if, if people aren't willing to change the code and we need more staff time, then they can do what San Anselmo does, which is close the planning and building department at noon every day. And that way, staff has the afternoon to, to do other work to implement their general plan.
Which comes down to prioritization, is, is, is public access and having open counter hours and that access to planning staff, you know, a higher priority than maybe getting on some of these general plan? Because one of the things is, we can look at, in the five years since adoption of the general plan, how many of these general plan programs have been adopted? Relatively few. So, you know, that, that's one of the challenges, too, is we've got these things that we think would be good programs, we've spent a fair amount of time. I think we've got a really good basis for going to the council and saying, you know, what are your priorities? And then folding that into a work program, but the, the question is, is, you know, do we have the bandwidth to do it? And I could, it's, we don't have it right now, not to do much.
And also for the planning commission, I think this would really streamline our meetings so that we can really focus on the more complex projects and not spend an hour talking about, you know, is the fence four feet or five feet? I think it would save everybody a lot of time.
You have more thoughts, Esther, you want to share?
Questions? I have questions. I think for the most part, I agree with this list and what you're trying to do here. I have a question about the change number, the item number two, I guess, two A, fifty percent remodel, change to match Ross Valley fire definition. So, because this is something I think everybody struggles with, you know, how do you define a significant remodel? So how does a fire district define a significant remodel?
We got that from, from planning commission.
No, 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 I, I can, so their definitions are very similar. I can read them both to you. The fire departments is in our building code, but when the planning commission was reviewing it, they added in, if you're changing beams, you know, beams, girders, you have to count, count all the square footage of any of the rooms where these things are being affected, or if you're adding a bedroom. And the planning commission added that because we have so many houses in the hills that were cottages with no parking. And so they didn't want to just, the whole intent of the, of the fifty percent remodel ordinance is to try to, when people are either doing significant improvements, like a fifty percent rebuild of the house, or if they're increasing the bedrooms, is to get them to provide some parking. Because the state of California doesn't allow us to limit the number of adults in a bedroom below two. So every time someone adds a bedroom to one of these houses in the hillsides, it's potential for two more adults and two more cars.
Okay.
So, so I don't, I don't know if you want to just go with the fire department's definition, because you would lose that bedroom portion of it. They don't have that in their definition.
Right.
I think the, the main thing was, are we, we use fifty percent, they use substantial, that terminology.
Right, right. And so let me ask you a question about the process. So a project comes to you, and it's a fifty percent remodel or a significant remodel, you review it, and then you route it to fire because it's significant, right? So then they review it, and then they tell you what you need to do. So this is, this comes before me a lot, where the building department will not, an example, you have a kitchen remodel, and you have an open floor plan, okay? And that open floor plan includes this really big grate room. And the fire department says, if you remodel your kitchen, you now have an island, it's a remodel, you have plumbing fixtures in there, because it is open to that grate room, you have to count the square footage for the grate room. And now it's a significant remodel, and all you were doing was upgrading your, your kitchen. And that kills, then people with, you know, vaulted ceilings have to put fire sprinklers, and it's just, you know, don't get me started.
Well, but there's a distinction there, is that's kind of their thing and what projects they impact or kill. The other question is, is, you know, what does it do with the planning commissioner staff's processing of that project?
Right. So my question is, when you get something like a kitchen remodel in an open floor plan, the designers, the architects have to say, you know, we, we are remodeling whatever, a hundred square feet, or we are remodeling three hundred square feet? And then the ratio determines whether it goes to fire or not in some jurisdictions. So what happens here in Fairfax?
Anytime something goes to the planning commission, it gets routed to the fire department, whether it's a, whether it's a fifty percent remodel or not.
Right. So my question is, if I come to you with a kitchen remodel, that is, the kitchen is a hundred square feet, but it just so happens to open up into a grate room, is that going to go to fire?
If it's, if it's, if it's a use permit right now, like if they have a substandard lot, yes, every project that comes before you goes to the fire department. It all gets routed to MMWD, the fire department.
So if the idea is to maybe revisit what triggers those fire thresholds and figure out local processing, at the same time, maybe getting it from the planning commission's desk to staff's desk?
But my, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is the fire department gets all the building permits, too, anyway, so even if they didn't catch it on the, on the planning commission review, they're going to get the building permit application. You'd have to change the fire department's definition of substantial.
Not necessarily. I, I won't mention towns, but some towns will just review that over the counter and issue the permit same day.
Right, I think, yeah, they're not looking at everything.
They're not looking at, you're not touching anything anywhere else. I mean, I've had situations where we remove a closet or change the doors on the closet, but because it's facing the bedroom, the whole bedroom is counted. And it just, it's just, yeah, and, and I, I kind of see it, you know, I hope they're not listening, but I kind of feel like California or the fire districts have taken the opportunity to upgrade fire protection when somebody applies for a permit.
That's exactly right, that's...
So it's, it's almost like you're trying to make improvements, and you're trying to better the community, the neighborhood, everything, and people are not able to do that. So it's, it's, I kind of feel like it's...
Well, and therefore, they don't make those improvements to the commu, to the, to the lot and to the community.
Correct.
Because they're hitting thresholds. A question, do all of our building permits, when they're issued, go to fire?
Yeah, when some, when someone brings, if someone brings in plans to our counter, they bring in five sets, and two sets go to the fire department when they're applying for a building permit.
Regardless of what the permit is doing?
If it's an over-the-counter permit for, like, minor plumbing, it won't go, but if it's any kind of an addition or a remodel...
We'd need to get back to you on, on what, what level of, because I know that they, the fire, Ross Valley has one fire marshal slash inspector, so I, I think that they're very short-staffed, I'm not sure what they're actually reviewing.
Can I...
But we're getting a little off track, because, because the whole reason the planning commission adopted the fifty percent remodel in our zoning ordinance is because we had so many people coming in, it was during the phase of people flipping houses, they were coming in, they were fixing the houses up, but they weren't providing, they weren't giving any benefit back to the neighborhood. They were making a lot of money on improving these houses without bringing the parking. And so the planning commission added that section about if you're adding a bedroom, or if you're doing a fifty percent remodel, you either have to provide the required parking or you have to get a parking variance from the planning commission. I actually think that when you did that, it was pretty, it was a pretty good idea. Because then, if someone wanted to, you know, totally redo the house, you at least looked at it and, you know, determined whether they really could, could put some money into the parking, they just didn't want to, you know? And you either granted a variance if you felt their reasoning was sound, or, or you said, no, we're going to deny this, and you need to provide the parking before you can do these improvements.
Yeah, so, yes, I'm, I'm just not clear or decided on how the language should be changed, because I'm not sure how it affects the review process, you know, if it stops with us, or, you know, if it's an over-the-counter review.
We could, we could table this, this item and do a little bit more research and bring that back, so...
Okay, so other than that, let me see my other questions. This is page two. I don't, I'm not sure I understand, solar includes site-specific report for application, consider requiring installation based on site-specific reports. So are you saying that if there's a report, a site-specific report, that's something that you can handle?
We already have a streamline of the small solar, so I think this may be old.
Okay, so that...
Well, it's also, I think this was a planning commission, a regionated initiative, and I think the idea is sort of get towards saying, if you've got a house that's got good solar access, put in solar. That, that was the direction on that. So I think that was, a commissioner's no longer on the commission, but the idea is to start to really push those programs.
Okay. So, I don't think I agree or disagree with it, I have a big question mark. You're, you're saying that this is something that doesn't have to come before us. I agree, it shouldn't come before us if you have a report. Then going down to use permits and design review permits, expiration date, I know everybody has a different clock and a reset. Would this one-year lifespan be from the time of approval or the time of application? So it's a one, variant, oh, this, I'm sorry, this is variance expires in one year if construction is not started on the project. So is the one year from the time of the application or from the time of the issuance of the variance?
Well, there's two things, is number one, if you have an incomplete application, then it, it times out after a certain period of time, and then an approval would time out after a certain period of time as well, so after the approval.
Okay. I personally would change it to eighteen months, because it takes, and I don't know if it's just right now, sign of the times, but it takes a long time to get people working together on a project. So you could see six months go very easily because you can't find a contractor or you can't find a structural engineer that is available.
You could maybe, so...
But, but the, but yes.
So our HRDs, our HRDs and our variances expire after a year, but you can request a one-year extension that staff can grant as long as you make no changes to the plans that were approved by the planning commission, so that actually gets you up to two years, which, and we could do something like that.
Okay, yeah, I just think one year is...
Short.
Short. And then, the next one, green building, consider adopting a town-specific ordinance. So are you saying that you guys, well, what are you saying? That the California building codes take care of it and we don't have to do it? Because I agree. Yeah, I agree. California is so ahead of anything that, you know, we could ever think of that's different or better.
Yeah, it used to be that Marin and jurisdiction of Marin were, were ahead of the curve on the state, and they've really caught up with a lot of that green building requirements and programs.
Okay. And then the last question I think I have, let me see. So the accessory dwelling unit ordinance...
It's done.
Are you, are you saying...
It's done.
It's, it's done.
Yeah, this list predated the state law. This list has been hanging around for a couple of years.
Okay, because I, I'm trying to figure out if you're talking about eliminating the survey, so, yeah, that's all ministerial now. Okay, that's it. Otherwise, I agree with your recommendations.
Michelle, Laura, any thoughts on the ordinance that you haven't already shared?
I basically concur with Esther's comments and the other comments of everyone else's. I mean, if there's duplicate, if there's duplicate efforts, you know, like with the building code and all that, we shouldn't really be looking to add additional regulation that's already existing. And, yeah, I don't really have anything else to add.
And my two cents again is whatever can help to reduce your workload while not involving a significant amount of workload in and of itself. I hear what you're saying, Cindy, I kind of agree with you about the lack of information we have on some of these issues, but I don't want to see, you know, the kind of data analysis that you're talking about, I just think it'd be a lot of effort that may not result in the, the benefits that it's worth.
But I think town can, as Linda had said, take a look at what came before us in the last year and give us examples of some of these, whereas now, we don't have anything other than...
other than, than what's here.
So, from my perspective, you know, good luck, you guys. See you, you know, I'm thinking you guys are going to have a lot to kind of sort through this and come back with a clear and concise recommendation, right?
That's correct. For the next meeting, we will have a kind of a priority, a prioritized list, kind of our best attempt at putting a context, a discussion behind the recommendations. And then, we'll, we'll, we'll get a, our quickie look at which projects these involve. Maybe, who knows? Maybe it will That's right. The brief respite in the, in the application war, exactly what we're trying to, try to get a little distance from some of these or figure out a way. But we'll, we'll come back with that response, ready to go to the town council in the meeting afterwards.
No, we still have the planning director's report.
Well, this can be very brief. We have two commissioners that signed up for the, for the League of California Cities Planning Commissioners Academy down in, down in Monterey. I don't know if the newest commissioner wanted to try to do it. They, first, they said they sold out and then, or, sold out. It was booked up. Then, when I communicated, it seemed like there was a possibility of a waiting list. So, if one of the commissioners or the newest commissioner wants to go down to Monterey for a few days, I don't know if you were planning to take some of your commissioners down there for that. But in any event, it's a possibility. Other than that, as I mentioned earlier, council general overview parameters on cannabis regulations. And so, that will be coming before your commissioner, your commission sooner rather than later because obviously, that's got a lot. I mean, one of our hopes is, you know, there's five different regulated categories of cannabis regulations under medical, adult, medical and adult use, recreation, cannabis, whatever the last one is. But, you know, there's hundreds of pages of state regulations, which rumor has, they change on a weekly basis, or at least the rate, the guidelines and, you know, other regulations relating to that. So, it's going to be a lot of work. But something that's important for Fairfax, obviously.
You anticipate we'll see that in April?
Can't say it'll be April. Might be a little bit later, but depending on what the, the feedback from, from the council is. Morinda Heights, I, I will probably just do an overview on that project just so that, for the, for the web and, and to bring the commission up to date on what the status of that is. Likely, by the next planning commission meeting, we'll have a detailed punch list on what the application needs and where, where it's going, what some of the issues are. I'm not sure how we're going to proceed with local review. I briefly discussed with the applicant today some options. And like I said, when we put that on the agenda, I think I'll, we'll have an opportunity to get into a little bit more detailed discussion about that. Still pretty global because, of course, the planning commission's formal review of that project is still a ways off.
I have a couple of questions for you. Cindy, at the meeting that we had in December, I think, is that December, asked you for some kind of information about all the state housing laws that we heard about a couple of times already tonight. And Michelle's now asked for, you know, an overview from the town attorney.
Yes.
So, I'm just wondering if that's something that you think you could plan to do for March, April timeframe?
We have made more than one specific request to the town attorney to provide that. We're in the process of assembling other jurisdictions' reports. This kind of ties into the housing, annual housing report that the town, you know, every jurisdiction is required to do as well. Kind of saying, here's the state laws that govern what the town is and isn't supposed to do. So, I will renew that. It's just been with everything else coming up. I haven't, you know, sent out another stern email. And one of the problems was, I think, Katie Katie left, and she was putting that together. So, there was a little changeover and somebody else is going to have to jump into the breach. But, yeah, this is, this is important. The council is already expressing its position on, was it SB 827? So, you know, everybody's aware that there are these, what did that one speaker refer to? The avalanche? It's, it's really surprising.
And we want it, too. We've asked for
Yeah. We're, we're looking, because it's a laundry list, and it's really challenging to figure out how they knit together. I, you know, even some of the ones coming out of that San Francisco center, I, I'm reading the two ordinances and saying, okay, this one says you have to do affordable, this one says you don't. You know, how do those, how do those jive? I mean, we're CEQA. One says you don't have to do it, the other one is silent, you know, things like that. So, yeah, it'll be a learning experience for all of us, and I hope to have that for your commission soon.
And the other thing I want to ask about is, you mentioned the annual review of the housing element, and I just want to make sure that, you know, maybe you could report back to us at the next meeting on the status of that and what you guys are thinking, you know? If that's a, I think the planning commission needs to be aware of what's happening with that and helping the review.
This is the housing element report.
Okay. I just must have missed it then. If it's not in my cubby hole, it doesn't exist.
Okay. We'll, we'll check in on that again.
And that was up for that. Anything else, anybody?
Minutes.
Does anyone have any comments on the minutes? I have a comment. I like answering my own questions. So, on page two, under where Commissioner Caroline's comments, she appreciated the revisions, which have brought the project closer into conformance. We just need to change he to the. And on page three, there's, sort of towards the middle, there's a statement about Commissioner Green providing the following comments, and there's three bullets. And the first bullet is repeated again, and it looks like he's just repeating himself. So, let's take that. If you go down, you know, it says Commissioner Green, then there's three bullets, and then it's Commissioner Curly, Caroline, and then there's Commissioner Green again with the first bullet again. I don't know why Phil is just repeating himself like that, but let's not embarrass him and take that out. Okay. And those are my thoughts.
All second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Epstein. I wasn't here.
Okay. So, I am on aye. So, all of those of us who are voting have voted aye.
Aye.
And I think that does it for the evening. Motion to adjourn?
I move adjournment.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So be it.
Thank you, Steph. Nice work.